Okay, thank you everybody for being here. Welcome. I'd like to call this meeting to order and if you would stay in, Councilman Hunt will have our invocation and lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Lord God our Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for bringing us together to deliberate the issues of our city. And thank you for having, for placing such fine citizens within our realm. Please add a portion of your wisdom to our deliberations so that we can come across with the best answers for all that we serve. A special blessing that we ask for those in our city who are bereaved or sick in any way, and a prayer to watch over our military as they serve in Fort Lambs. This in your son's name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Gene. All righty, next item on our agenda is our audience for visitors. If there's anyone who would like to address council on any issue at this time, we'd like to hear from you. Mr. Carmine, and then Mr. Tignor.
Mr. Tignor, you're about to have your first...
No, we, no, we need to open up with something positive.
My reason for really coming in tonight was really to praise this council.
Wow.
I kinda like everything you've done since you've been here, most of you, let me put it that way. There'd be a few exceptions. But it seems way back and, incidentally, I've got some terrible news today.
Can't go skiing anymore?
Can't go, no, I was skiing three weeks ago. I did a 90-mile snowmobile ride, first longest snowmobile ride I ever did in my life in Jackson Hole, Wyoming. But, no, they're closed, they're gonna, they're solely iceplex. I've been skating there and competing there for so long, and we're not gonna have an iceplex on the peninsula, a place to skate.
You put a sign on your property and we'll skate back there.
Well, my pond is still there. I had bulldozes 50 years ago. It's 40 by 100. Got a sledding hill back there for all of y'all to use. I'd like for you, anytime we have snow, bring your kids back and your grandchildren.
We appreciate it.
Some of you, your great-grandchildren, I understand.
Go ahead with your praise of council, Ray.
All right. Back on November 23rd, now some of you may not like what I'm gonna say, I was here at a meeting and at that time, I was talking about some future things that we were looking forward to happening in Pecosin on our waterfront. And I mentioned how so many of our people were opposed to having a high school in Pecosin. We had a large number opposed to having a sewer in Pecosin, of all things. Who wants a sewer in Pecosin? Apartments, worst thing in the world. And, so, but tonight, I'm not gonna talk about things like that, but I want to thank you because on November 23rd, I feel embarrassed that I didn't come here to a previous meeting to tell you how much I appreciate this councils when they passed the ordinance, bringing us into the 21st century. Those of us who want to see Pecosin progress and get ahead, and I still think that we could be the premier city in the United States on the east coast. We've got more to offer than anything that they ever built in Florida, but we've got to do a lot of changes in order to do that. And one of the one things we're gonna have to do, 'cause I've been in planning for the last 55, 55 years in the state of Virginia as well as in Pecosin, 50, 60 years ago, but we're gonna have to come around and think about this Chesapeake Bay Act, which was passed in Pecosin by previous council. None of you had anything to do with it, but you heard me before, repeat the Fifth Amendment to the Constitution of the United States, 'cause I believe in property rights, I believe in the Constitution of the United States. And when I see people interfering and taking advantage of us, then I feel like I have to speak out. And that Fifth Amendment to the Constitution of the United States is so clear, quote, "Nor shall private property be taken for public use without just compensation." And I'll tell you this, when the state of Virginia was deceived in the passing of wetlands legislation, many, many, many hundreds of thousands of Virginians had their property seized, take the use of land taken away from them, crimes committed against them by the state of Virginia. And the people responsible for this were groups like the Sierra Club, Chesapeake Bay Foundation, and half a dozen other radical environmental organizations who have no interest in Pecosin. And if they have their way, we will never get anywhere. We'll never be able to use our property, never be able to advance and to become the Pecosin that we're capable of coming. It's not just the water supply, although we've had some fantastic articles in the newspaper recently, one on March 7th and one on March 14th, which addressed some of these problems. Of course, all of us were happy. I had to call so many of my friends and my daughters to let them know that we are the best suburb in Pecosin, in Virginia. Pecosin is the best suburb. Now, I'm sure you brought that up at previous meetings, and, which I, since I wasn't here, all of that just came up last week. But certainly, that's a credit to Pecosin and to some of you who have made Pecosin the best suburb. They call us the verb, and then they mention that we are the suburb. And Business Week is certainly a noteworthy magazine for doing that. I was very disappointed when the last, incidentally, one of the articles that brought my attention that I wanted to mention to you tonight is that the courts have struck, they just strike down a zoning change that took place, where a gentleman was building his home in a resource protection area. The city of Pecosin, and none of you were responsible for this, but the city of Pecosin, previous council felt pressured into passing a Chesapeake Bay Act. It wasn't just that they took so much wetlands away from us with the state passed that bill, but they passed another act that if you come back of all the wetlands in Pecosin, and probably half of Pecosin would be considered wetlands, or longer, or more, then you come back another 100 feet and take all of our property away from us with the Chesapeake Bay Act. Now, no one in the state of Virginia, in Pecosin, or elsewhere, has a right to take one square inch of your property away from you, the use of it, that you can't build a home on it, you can't cut a tree on it, you can't do anything. The Chesapeake Bay Local Assistance Board spent quite a bit of time here, I don't know, some 10, 15 years ago, and our council felt pressured into changing, endless changes to our zoning ordinance, which are very anti-Pecosin. It's almost impossible for us to survive as a community, but with the changes that we made, felt pressured to make, because even our former mayor felt that if we didn't make all of these changes, that the state would sue Pecosin and we wouldn't have any money to pay these fines, and we would just not exist anymore. So, our council voted in favor of resource protection areas as well as other areas. But I'm telling you this, that any of you on that council, or me, or anyone else in this room, or anywhere in the state, in Pecosin, that had one square inch of their land taken to protect the Chesapeake Bay, that they can't use to build a home on, or cut a tree on, they can't do anything else with, crimes were committed against them by our own city council. None of you were on that city council. And I thank you for that, 'cause I think if we'd have given it a second thought, our city council would never have voted for the Chesapeake Bay Act nor anywhere else. Now, I like this article that came out, "The Court Strikes a Zoning Change." I may put on my glasses here because I want to register what was in this. It went on to say that Chesapeake Bay, it says, "The court said the General Assembly acting through the Chesapeake Bay Local Assistance Board neither expressly nor impliedly granted local localities the authority to designate resource protection areas." So the city of Pecosin was wrong in designating, and any other municipality, or county, or state, or anything was wrong, well, now they're talking about Virginia here, was wrong to come up with a resource protection area, taking 100 foot from everybody's waterfront property and destroying the fact that you run into these problems down at the end of Ren's Road. And I'm sure that every time I've been here, and I'm not always here, but whenever I'm here, I can tell where our members of the Chesapeake Bay Act and the Sierra Club and the members of other radical organizations come in here to try to make you do this or do that. And I know that this member, this council doesn't tolerate things like that. But anyway, what I'm saying, what we're finding here is that the Chesapeake Bay Local Assistance Board is saying, "We never pressured anybody into anything. You don't have to have a resource protection area in anywhere, in Hampton, this isn't Hampton, Pecosin, or elsewhere." And these days, we're gonna have to change our zoning and take out all this garbage that we put into it. And like I say, I've been in planning in the state of Virginia, and still am, at a state level for the last 50 or 60 years, and frankly, what happened in Pecosin and the deception when they passed the wetlands bill, any, anytime you lost one square inch of your property, and I lost an awful lot of it in Pecosin, and some of you have too, anytime you lost one square inch of the use of your land, then your government was, whether it was state, or federal, or local, was required to pay you, because that Fifth Amendment says, "Nor shall private property be taken for public use without just compensation." And if you take my land for the public's environmental use, you've taken it, and you violated my constitutional rights, and you, not that you've done anything, don't let me, I'm not trying to put this on you guys, but anyone who does it has taken your rights and my rights away from me and violated my constitutional rights and committed a crime against me. And hopefully someday, we will, the people who are interested in property rights will come forth and we'll be able to do something about it. Hopefully in my lifetime, of course, I've been here for 83 years almost, and don't regret a minute of it. I'm not gonna take more of your time tonight, but I will say this, that there was another nice article on the 14th, and most of you saw that. It says, "The long drink," and it has to say that the Sierra Club and the Chesapeake Bay Foundation is one reason that your great-grandchildren, if we decide to continue having families in Pecosin, you may not have drinking water nor bathing water adequately. And James City County is in real trouble now already. And if we continue to have families, we're gonna continue to need more water. So that these radical environmentalists who have been so instrumental in preventing us from having a nice 125-acre lot up in Prince William, and this year, we could have saved all this nice extra water we've had, and saved it for, for the dry times. I gotta stop talking, 'cause I just run, 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 and Phil says you shouldn't talk so much, but you can see my point.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Tignor.
My name is Bobby Tignor, 718 Pecosin Avenue. I'm here part of both the McDonald's deal. I don't like what went down, what comes up and goes down around here, but that. I went to the first planning commission, I got a, it's not a little abuse of it, but I went to Newport New Shipyard in 58, come down here to country, my daddy died, and I didn't get much schooling. I got in some, involved in some meetings in there, and I set up in there, and I said, "Well, I ain't supposed to say anything, 'cause them people are smarter than I am. I don't have the education." After I went to about 10 of them, I said, "Well, I believe I'm just about as smart as they are." I ain't got no schooling, but I got a little common sense. So I want to talk a little common sense tonight. The lot over here, where they participate in our ring going and filling it up with flowers and stuff again, is that part of, I'm not, I'm, wanna answer later, I know you won't answer it now, but how did that get a part of the farm franchise facility? It was a house on it, it got knocked down, so is that commercial? The drainage over there is draining right straight into the riverbank here. I farm, I farmed George L. Smith's farm up here for years, down Carver Snake Road, down by the ditch, I had to stay away from the creek 100 foot. With a little bit of fertilizer, I could have afford to put in that big field up there, but I had to stay away to further it out. I got a farm up in Caroline where I came from. I draw about $60 an acre for my, to rent it to my nephew for farmland. The state pays me $40 an acre to go around it and put vegetation around it for the filter through for the Chesapeake Bay Act and all of that. I take the $40, I spend money in it to put it all the way around it, keep it bushy oak once a year and stuff. But I come here, and I'm out here with the landscaping, I'm going into the yards where we got to put so much mulch down for the drainage to go through, dig the pits and put the gravels in for the filter through. So, I don't, I don't see what common sense is going on with bringing flowers in out here and highly fertilize. I know how much they're fertilized, they're highly fertilized. That is the drain to shoot right into the bay. So, like I say, I don't have any book sense, but I got a little common sense. And it's water country here, watermen making a living out of it, and for to let that happen, it ain't right. But I thought it was gone away, I went out, invested in a boy's place up there, he didn't have the money to invest in it, to make something of it. I went out, when y'all denied it, I went to Suffolk to a big planting operation, I contracted for so many plants. I went to Ronnie Kelly's over across James River, I've been over there, pick up stuff, I contracted for him with so many plants. So, all of my extra dollars is out on a gamble that wasn't supposed to happen. So, if mine goes under, and the taxes go up here in Pecosin, I'm going to the farm. So, I'm gonna have to go, 'cause I come into City Hall each year, I'm paying $9,000 tax. So if I don't make some money around here, I can't afford to do it on social security. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bobby. Thank you. We'll get you an answer to those questions. Randy, could we make sure we get some answers to those questions?
Certainly.
Anyone else? All right, let's move on to the approval of our minutes. We have two sessions. If we could take those individually, please.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion now, we approve the minutes from the regular session dated March 8th, 2010.
Okay. I think we have a motion made in second, and we adopt the minutes for a regular session, March 8th, 2010. Any, any concerns, or comments, questions regarding those minutes? If not, Mr. Wiegand, please.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
And Mayor Hesel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you, Judy. And a special session, please.
Mr. Mayor, one of you, there are amended minutes for your consideration.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion now, we approve the minutes of the city council's special session meeting on March 15th, 2010.
Okay. Second. All right. Motion made in second, and we adopt a special session minutes as well.
Are these the amended ones?
Amended, is that right?
Frank.
As amended in the second, was it?
As amended, yes.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Hesel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you, Judy. We have four public hearings. The first is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of up to $215,000 principal amount of a general obligation bond to finance school capital improvements for the city school and restructuring of debt. Mr. Wheeler.
Mr. Mayor, this is a follow-on to previous conversations and direction from this council. We're looking to refinance our existing debt, to take advantage of lower interest rates, and to lock rates that are subject to change in the future at today's rates. We do not extend the term out, we're not pushing our debt out, and we are fully in conformance with your adopted fiscal guidelines. Kyle and Dan are here, if you have questions for them, but as they've given you a presentation on this concept once before, wasn't sure what you needed from them at this point.
Okay. All right. Are there any questions of the manager, or are there any questions of the gentleman in our audience? We pretty well, I think we thoroughly discussed this.
Yeah, this is just a study. We don't have to take any action on this one.
Okay, adopt the ordinance.
Yep, have to adopt the ordinance. Okay. Okay, no comments from city council?
They aren't coming back, they aren't coming back again. Last time they were here, there was something that was in the works to come back, like in six weeks or whenever, for the financing or the bonding or whatever. This takes the place of that?
This is that.
This is it.
This is the, this is your...
Yeah, this is basically just the kind of formal action, kind of the nitty-gritty legal documents that put in place the plan we discussed back in February.
You show less appearance here for a while?
I think so. Unless you, unless you can drum up anything else to bring us out.
We can hear you.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
But you are, I mean, the public hearing part of it is really just for the small piece that is new money for the...
The $215...
The school issue.
HVAC system, right.
And otherwise, it's all refunding, and we, and I think appropriately, you're throwing this into the refunding, 'cause you know, you've taken care of all your issuance costs and everything else.
Right.
You know, bigger issues, so it's, it makes sense efficiency-wise.
You guys in the company you represent did a heck of a job, by the way.
Yeah.
Really did, we appreciate it.
And you're right, we did pile on with the school HVAC system, because we didn't think about it the night that you were there, but we appreciate you adding that in, because like, like you said, we see that as a, as a project that's worthwhile of financing, since it's long duration, so we appreciate that.
The resident, the ordinance that you have in front of you, there's a minor change that we filed with the city clerk that has, where in case the city manager is not available, wherever it says city manager, it now says, "Or assistant city manager." So that's, that's the only change, otherwise, the ordinance is exactly what you had in front of you.
Okay. Okay, any other questions before we open the public hearing? Okay, so thanks, guys. Appreciate you. All right, we will then open the public hearing and ask, is there any comment from anyone in the audience regarding this ordinance? Anyone at all? Okay, we will close the public hearing and have some action from council, please.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of general obligation bonds in a maximum aggregate principal amount of $21,500 for the city of Pecosin.
Second. Okay, we have a motion made in second, that we adopt the ordinance. Are there any other concerns or comments? Any questions? If not, Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hesel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you, Judy. Let's move on to our second public hearing, which is an ordinance amending Article I, Section 1-3 of the zoning ordinance to add the definition of farmer's market and seasonal items. Wheeler?
Mr. Mayor, this is the first of two related public hearings. What we're trying to do is to, to add some additional substance to our zoning ordinance relating to the seasonal sales. We had references without definitions before, and was trying to, to make sure that if we ever have another reason to apply that section, that the definitions are clear and that they match up.
Sure.
Debbie is here, and might be useful for her to do a brief summary of both the changes at one time, since they're related.
Sure. Debbie?
Happy birthday, by the way. That's your day.
Thank you, thank you. At your request, basically, I think we had discussed some issues that we were having with our zoning ordinance, with our recent interpretation of the zoning ordinance for local businesses and for new businesses coming in town. We found that we had some, some gaps in our, in our language, which was very difficult for us to try to explain to our residents and our business community in how we interpret our zoning ordinance. So in order to clarify that, that problem, what we have provided for you in your agenda package, and the copy of it is on the slide, or is on the screen, is basically two, two new definitions. One is a definition for farmer's market, which basically will allow both the watermen and/or farmers of our communities to come forward and to actually sell the products that they produce at their farm, and to sell it without having to go through the, or the expensive development costs associated with establishing a business in the city of Pecosin. This would also cover the watermen who actually use Messick Point to, to sell their products that they harvest, that will also be provided for, where we currently do not have any provisions in our zoning ordinance to cover that kind of use. The second definition that's being presented to you this evening is concerning seasonal sales. Seasonal sales have always been allowed in our zoning ordinance, but it has not been very clear as to what products are allowed under seasonal sales. So the particular language that's included in your agenda package, basically, and hopefully will clarify what we perceive to be a seasonal sale item that can be used as an extension of businesses that are established along the With Creek Road and, and/or Victor Boulevard corridor, hopefully in the future. That basically summarizes it. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Okay, Debbie, thank you. Any questions to Debbie?
I have one quick question. I'm sorry I didn't mention it to you earlier. It looks like all the seasonal items are perishable. Or is that what we're meaning to make sure of? Would it, would it read better if we said perishable items such as, and then the list? Or...
I guess you could perceive it as being perishable, but I think we're also trying to capture other things that may just not be living things as well. We do have some businesses that may want to display outdoor furnishings and stuff like that, that may be okay under this provision. We're just trying to make it a little bit of flex, make it flexible, but if you would prefer for it to only be pertaining to living things, we can do that as well. Or products that...
I don't know that I have a preference, I just was asking a question. Do we, I'm thinking lawnmowers. Are they seasonal or not? You can't buy one unless it's springtime. Try to buy a lawnmower at the end of the summer, you can't find one. So, I didn't know if we wanted to clarify, because part of the issue with the, the last issue was to find seasonal items. I'm good with this.
We currently, though, I think we do have lawnmowers, at least two establishments, year-round, outside, which I have no problem with.
Couldn't find one.
Your question brings up a good point, I'm just not sure that we, I think...
I'm fine to go ahead and pass this, but maybe something to think about.
Yeah, sure, sure. Okay, other questions? Okay. Okay, thanks, Debbie. All righty, let's open the public hearing then. Is anyone in the audience that would like to make any comments regarding this ordinance? Okay. Let's close the public hearing and ask for action from council, please.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt an ordinance amending Article I, Section 1-3 of the zoning ordinance to add the definition of farmer's market and seasonal items.
All right, sir.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made in second, and we adopt the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? If not, Judy, please.
Mr. Mayor, this is a first reading.
Okay.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Mayor Hesel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you, Judy. We'll see that at our next meeting.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Okay, let's go on to our third public hearing, which is an ordinance amending Article 10, Section 10-29 of the zoning ordinance to define seasonal sales. Mr. Wheeler, you want Debbie to chat about that one as well, would you please?
This particular amendment modifies existing language that we have currently in our B2 district provisions in the zoning ordinance, and it relates to the uses that we allow by right in the B2 district. What the language is basically going to do is it states that if you are, you can have seasonal sales of items provided that you are a full-time business operation in the city, and the seasonal sales are an extension or an accessory use to the primary use that's occurring on the property. The other provision there that's, that lies in this new language is that if you are a civic club, you can continue to sell Christmas trees or, and/or any other seasonal item, provided that you are a bona fide civic organization that is located in the city of Pecosin, and/or the, the third allowance is for farmer's market, of course. So this provision kind of ties in to the original, or the, the first provision that you looked at this evening, towards changes to the zoning ordinance. Like I said, it's just a modification to the existing language that we already have in place, and hopefully it just clarifies those businesses and/or uses that can offer seasonal sales.
Okay, Debbie, thank you. Any questions to Debbie?
Thank you, ma'am.
Any concerns of council? Okay, we'll open the public hearing and see if there's anyone in our audience that would like to make any comments regarding this ordinance amendment. Okay, I don't see any, so we'll close the public hearing and ask for action from council, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion approving the ordinance, amending the zoning ordinance regarding permitted and conditional uses in the B2 zoning district, and this is the first reading.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, a motion made in second that we adopt the ordinance. Add to what Tracy said, this is the first reading. Okay, Ms. Wiggins, please.
Councilman Hunt. Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman. Councilman Southall.
Aye.
And Mayor Hesel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you, ma'am. And our fourth and final public hearing is an ordinance amending Map 5-3 Chesapeake Bay provision areas in Chapter 5, environmental management element of the city's comprehensive plan. Wheeler?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a proposed amendment to the comprehensive plan map to depict areas, to serve as a general guide to location of RPA, which is resource protection, and RMA, resource management areas. Debbie can provide some additional background if you want. Mr. Carmine spoke indirectly to the subject at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, are there other comments that we need to hear from the planning director? Are there any questions of council? Right. If not, we'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone in our audience that would like to make any comments regarding this ordinance. Okay?
May I say something?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, he said, "The best thing we could possibly do is do away with resource protection area, period, in Pecosin, because it violates so many people's property rights." And it was really a crime against everyone who had one squange taken to protect the bay. We don't live in the Chesapeake Bay. We breathe air. All of us live on the land. Our land is important. That's where we're going to have to provide homes for our great-grandchildren, not in the Chesapeake Bay. The bay is important, but not, considering how important our land is, but anyway, we're not going to do that tonight, but I would say in the future, I hope that we can certainly do away with all resource protection areas and a few other areas of this type. Thank you.
Okay, Ray, thank you.
To make it clear, I guess what we're looking at tonight is just a, it's a map to be included in the comprehensive plan that shows what is the current thing. Is this what staff will go to to say the properties within or outside of an RPA? Debbie?
Yes, sir, we will use this as a general guide. Please keep in mind that all site construction and new development of residential larger subdivisions, they all require site-specific delineations by professional surveyors and/or engineers per our zoning ordinance. The map that is before you this evening will replace the map that is currently in the comprehensive plan that you all just adopted in September. The map that was included in the adopted version of the plan, of the comprehensive plan, actually incorporates areas that we do not need to have incorporated into the RPA, such as non-title isolated wetlands that's in the Big Woods area. This map will basically, it follows our zoning ordinance, which states that we will pull our RPA features from the four-foot contour line. This map that's before you this evening accurately reflects that.
So, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's just a replacement map, which is more in line with what our zoning ordinance says to establish the RPA feature from that four-foot contour line.
Because this doesn't, and that's what stuck out at me, is it doesn't extend it to the Big Woods.
Correct. Correct, because the Big Woods wetlands are non-title and an RPA feature is not required from a non-title wetland.
Okay. Okay, other questions to Debbie? All right, thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Okay, let's open the public hearing and see if there's anyone in the audience that would like to make any comment regarding this ordinance. All right, we'll close the public hearing and ask for action from council.
Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt the resolution approving amendment of Map 4-3 of the city's adopted comprehensive plan.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion made in second that we adopt the ordinance. Any concerns or comments, any questions? If not, Ms. Wiggins, please.
It's actually a resolution, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, resolution, exactly right.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Hesel. Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
All right, thank you, Judy. Let's move on to new business. First item is a resolution adopting the FY 2011 through beyond fiscal 2015 capital improvement plan. Mr. Wheeler?
Mayor, this is a follow-on item. This is subject previously to a work session and planning commission of both the, or, excuse me, work session and public hearing at the planning commission and also the city council level. We have made four amendments since you saw this, this document last. We removed the pump station two project because it's now been funded. We removed the HVAC system at the middle school because it is now through your action tonight been funded. We have updated the With Creek Road project, and we have updated the sidewalk for next year, the sidewalk committee's report, based on your conversations previously, and those are the only changes.
Okay. Any questions of the manager regarding the resolution? Okay. All right, Debbie. Someone?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt the resolution adopting the five-year capital improvement plan for the city of Pecosin for fiscal years 2011 and beyond 2015.
All right, sir, thank you. All right, motion made in second that we adopt the resolution. Any concerns, comments, and questions? Ms. Wiggins, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman. And Mayor Hesel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you, Judy. Second item under new business is an ordinance amending the flood ordinance to include a repetitive loss program. Mr. Wheeler?
Mr. Mayor, we are actively engaged, as you know, trying to help our citizens deal with the impact of the title and storm-related flooding, and it came to our attention recently that we could amend our ordinance and perhaps help some of our citizens as they work with their insurance companies to get monies from them dealing with repetitive loss. Judy Wiggins, our assistant city manager, researched this, she prepared the amendments, she worked with FEMA, she's worked with bunches of people to see what we could do to help, so she may have something she'd like to add, but
I think you've hit on it pretty well. We're finding that the flood insurance is trying to find a way not to pay out the ICC monies, and by doing that, this time because the losses were not 50% of the value of the home, our residents are not getting that money, which they're going to need as their match for this grant. So this is an effort to put this ordinance in place, and hopefully the flood insurance companies will consider it retroactively and maybe help them get this funding. If not, it will certainly help in future floods.
And Judy, to you and Vic, I know you responded to the calls, at least to the calls that I got from residents, and this, these ICC funds, once you explained them to me, and I tried to reiterate that to the, to the homeowner, and their insurance companies have reacted to that. So it's absolutely wonderful.
I gotta tell you, Mr. Mayor, I sat on a grand jury with the former delegate from New York County who lives up in Seaford, and New York County Board of Supervisors did not pass the similar ordinance, and for some reason, she wasn't sure why, but I think it's a great thing that we are doing for the residents of Pecosin.
Absolutely.
And it shows, I think, that, you know, we think of the citizens a lot.
Yeah, there's, there's an awful lot in their flood policy that is, is covered up in extra print.
Yada, yada, yada stuff.
It is, it is, and, and I appreciate the, the work that went in on this. This is, this is absolutely a plus for those folks who, who have flood insurance and have had damage to their homes, I'm pretty sure about it.
Okay, any other questions or comments before we adopt this ordinance? Someone prepare the motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt an ordinance amending the Coda ordinances of the city of Pecosin, Virginia by revising Chapter 42, Article 2 to include repetitive loss provisions.
All right, sir.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion made in second that we adopt the ordinance. Any other questions, comments? Any concerns at all? Ms. Wiggins, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman. Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
And Mayor Hesel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you, ma'am. And the last item under new business is a resolution making appointments to the Industrial Development Authority.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, yes, I would like to make one appointment. This is to reappoint, I guess, or continue the term of Alan Metz. He was filling in for the term of Mr. Brown, who resigned, and I would like to appoint him to a term that expires 31st of March 2014. I guess I can make it the same time. I'd like to withhold the appointment of the second person to the IDA and to our next meeting, perhaps.
Postpone it.
Postpone it.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. All right, and we have a motion made in second that we adopt the resolution with Mr. Metz's name inserted, and we will postpone the appointment of the, of the second individual to our next meeting. Is that
Yes, please.
Was it Carrie G. Second, I'm sorry.
Oh, yes, indeed.
Okay. Okay, Judy, please.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
And Mayor Hesel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Wheeler?
Yes, sir. I have four items to share with the council this evening, in no particular order. A few of them are outlined in the manager's report. One is the With Creek Road project. As the council is very aware, we have been working hard to both increase funding from the state and the feds for this project, and we have been very successful this year. But we've also been trying at the same time to change the way that the state looks at this project as one project from inside the city of Hampton to inside the city of Pecosin, across the bridge and across the causeway, with the bridge and the causeway being the most important priorities for us, along with the Carries Chapel intersection, which we need to work in order for that to work. I think we have made a lot of progress, and what they're asking us is our consent to consider this as one project rather than two. So this, what this does is really sets the stage. You've heard before that the city of Hampton didn't yet have a project in the six-year plan, so that was part of the delay. By agreeing to make this one project, they do, and the monies that we have can begin to be used for that portion of the rescoping of the project for the areas that are most important to us, and we certainly have not abandoned the idea of changing the logical termini closer to the Carries Chapel intersection going towards Hampton rather than the other way. So I think this moves forward all the things that you all have asked us to move forward with, but before I consented to VDOT on behalf of the city, I wanted to run it by you in case you had a concern about that.
Primarily, we, we're looking to have that road raised from, from the bridge across the causeway. That's, that's, that's what we're after VDOT about, for that, for that area.
Not necessarily a widening.
No.
So per se, but to raise it so that it's passable.
We can get out of here in, in the event that we have another Isabel or
Is the widening a second part of this issue or? Because remember, we had discussions one time that we didn't want five lane, five lanes and whatever? That's a, that's a follow-on?
Actually, in this particular case, the money that we have from VDOT is to do our old project. We are simultaneously working with VDOT to change the termini to get rid of the widening beyond the Carries Chapel intersection. We're willing to push that in as a city and not doing additional parts of it beyond perhaps pedestrian lanes.
Right.
And put focus where it needs to be, on the bridge and the causeway.
Okay, good.
And Randy's exactly right. They, they've actually been very helpful. VDOT has been very helpful.
That's great, and it's a much-needed program. We appreciate Randy, your leadership, and Mayor, your leadership in, in helping push that forward, but that's certainly something that is vital to the citizens of this city as one of the two exits out, so no matter where you're from, that road needs to be raised.
Yes, sir.
Without objection, I'll, I will write VDOT and answer their, their query. Second, on one level, it's very important, on another larger scheme of things, it's probably smaller than the other two items, but in the manager's report, I made you aware that the city stage, which we have used for about 10 years since we purchased it and used, is essentially run out of gas, and we either need to repair it, and the estimates to repair it and get it safe and in full working order exceed $50,000, or we need to take it out of service and potentially get rid of it. This is probably the first of a series of conversations, which will include the pool cover and the heater relating to the pool and perhaps other items, where we have things that are either run out of, of use or, or they are not useful for us in our current budget scenario, and rather than have them sit, I'm going to bring them periodically to you and ask you how you'd like to proceed. The stage itself is, is barely functional and is not in the safest of conditions. We either need to fix it or take it out of service, and I'm suggesting we take it out of service because I don't know where we'd find $51,000.
Well, and the city of Hampton has been very, very generous to us with, you know, regarding the use of their stage, as well as York County, so will we use it for the seafood festival, excuse me, yeah, and the Christmas parade, maybe, is there, is there another time, maybe boat races or something?
The boat races, I think they have a stage down. They have one stage down. Yeah, but the king's the same, yeah, maybe they do.
I don't even, I'm not sure, but
Did they charge us for renting the, either the Hampton, the city of Hampton's stage or York County's stage?
I think they do, as, as we charge other places, but I would have to say we, for those three events that you mentioned, we can rent appropriate stages for much less than the prorated cost of this repair.
Yeah, I, I don't have any problem with
Supposedly.
No, I don't, in fact, the only thing I would, I would tell you is, you may want to have, this is probably a good area where you can take care of some regional cooperation and maybe purchase one in conjunction with York County or Hampton in the future so that both cities get the benefit and share the cost of it, but as far as getting rid of this one, I agree with you. I think we can probably privately lease those, knowing where we, where our needs are well in advance, so it's okay with me.
Well, thank you. I think this is a right thing to do.
Okay.
Two other items of token, just a few of you recently about the mailing from the census, not the first one, but the second one.
Not the first one?
Well, actually both. It had many Pecosin addresses actually addressed as Hampton. We saw that too, and you all have heard that, and citizens have talked to us about it, and we did follow up with the US Census, and they assured us that you're counted based on your physical location and that they don't sort by address or address, zip code or zip code name, and so they're aware of the issue. I have to tell you, there are plenty of places, the one I used to work in, for example, the two biggest zip codes in Spotsylvania were named Fredericksburg, so they do have procedures in place, but we saw it too, and we were, we followed up promptly, and they've assured us that that will be taken care of. I also did want to provide a brief update for the council with regard to where we are with the budget process. General Assembly has completed its work on the city's side. We're in no worse position than we were before on the city's side, because we had accounted for certain things and some net up, some net down, but no significant negative erosion of where we are. School system's moving forward on their budget. Superintendent put her budget out last Tuesday evening, and in that were the recommendations to address $1,034,000 worth of budget shortfall. Shortfall was made up of three basic items, about a $600,000 reduction in state support, $107,000 in federal support, and then there were some mandatory or unavoidable cost increases, single big of which, biggest of which related to VRS and things that were coming from the state, not on the revenue side, but on the expenditure side. on the revenue side, but on the expenditure side. Her recommendations are available in superintendent's office, in our library, and on their website. They have their public hearing tomorrow evening, and that's in this room tomorrow evening, and they will be at that time discussing how the general assembly's final budget impacted the planning number that they have. They'll be unveiling that tomorrow. They were still working on that as we closed our regular business day-to-day. So we'll have the final piece of information in terms of state revenue within a day, and then we can get about seeing how we solve this thing. I have been working to redraft the letter that you all have seen previously to update the information. Had occasion to run that draft by the mayor, since in terms of just block, redo it in one page, as you suggested, if we, seven signature blocks are hard to get on one page. So if the mayor does it, so I happened to see the mayor first, and I asked him to look at it. Mr. Hunt, we haven't yet figured out how to put the charts in there, but I think I've got some space to do that, because on one fold, I think I've put sort of the best of, so I appreciate your suggestions on which might be the best. But I pass this out to you, not to ask you to do anything with it other than look at it over the next couple of days and maybe provide a little bit of feedback if you have any. But we're at the point where we're, I think, ready to send this subject to your final comments to the citizens. It brings us up to where we are and where we're going, where they can go to get more information. So if you could provide your comments back to me in the next few days, I would appreciate it, and I will discuss them with the mayor as a signatory and figure out how best to go.
Can I ask one question based on...
Yes, sir.
...other comments tonight? So basically, Randy, as I heard you just describe, because I want to make it clear to citizens and stuff out there, the gap in the school budget that council has to make a decision on making up is $1,034,000, $600,000 of which is state reduction, $107,000 of which is federal tax production, federal tax dollar reduction, and $330,000 or so in VRS, which is the Virginia Retirement System.
In VRS and other things, but VRS was the largest.
The largest. So that's the challenge to council. City spending is essentially flat.
Yes.
And so that's the challenge that we're up against, and that goes along with what's said in the letter, but I didn't want to get lost in the language.
If I could make one additional point?
Absolutely.
Not for you, of course, but anyone that might be listening. However the city deals with this $1 million problem this year, there's another one in the second year of the state's two-year budget recently passed, yet to be signed by the governor. So an equivalent problem is facing us the second year, and it's not simply the continuation of a problem from one year to the next, but it's actually a stair step. It's an additional $1 million in year two that we could be looking at. So that is on the mind of the school board and superintendent as well. They're trying to attack this issue as a multiple-year budget as we are.
And that's because I think a lot of things from this year's general assembly have been pushed off to 2011, 2012, including VRS. I mean, even though we're taking a hit this year with $300,000 for VRS, it doesn't get any rosier next year because the increases are going to come eventually to pay off VRS dues.
Now, the VRS, not to get in too much debate here in council directives, but the VRS problem was really driven by decline of the markets where VRS funds were invested in.
Exactly.
With the recovery somewhat of those markets, is there any likelihood that VRS will rebound, so to speak? And I guess that's really the question that's out there for the second year of the biennium.
But the city's side of VRS didn't increase this year, but the school's side was supposed to go up, which I don't know how the money is tied in there or what the deal is between city and school's side.
I can address that if you'd like me to.
Sure.
Absolutely.
It did go up.
It did go up on the city's side.
The way the state does it, and if you're CPA, well-versed in VRS rules, I apologize in advance for my oversimplification, but there are basically three pots. There's the local government pot, which is separately actuarially rated, the school pot, and then there's sort of the bigger state pot. Each is discreetly rated. The VRS Board of Directors or Board of Trustees makes a recommendation at the general assembly each year as to what amount should be in there to meet their current and ongoing obligations. It changes. It changes when the market changes. When the market was doing very well, the rates were actually going down. Then the general assembly decides whether or not they're going to put in as much as the board recommends, and in several years that I recall, they did not, because it has an immediate savings in the state budget and often has a savings for school boards and/or localities also. In the year that we're in now, they're looking at a fourth-quarter holiday for VRS payment for the employer's share, not the employee's share, but the employer's share for both the state government and for education, not for local government. And the changes that they're putting forward to the system in terms of rates for next year, while our rate is going up, the changes to what goes in, that we're recently part of the general assembly, those only affected the school systems and the state. So in a way, our sub-fund is more solvent, but each year they get a chance, based on that advice, to put more in, and as things pick up long-term, there'll be less pressure to do that. But each year that they put in less than they're advised by the VRS board to do that, they take a little bit of a risk, and it's a long-term obligation. But we can see that the rates are going to be going up until the market changes. That's just something that we're going to be faced with. And also, Mr. Krieger, as you were saying, next year, when all the stimulus has gone away from the state, which is they're using to support their budget, and they held us harmless in this upcoming budget on the local composite index, half of that goes away next year in fiscal year 12, and the VRS rates come probably more robustly than they did this year. And all of those things contribute to that number you see in the draft and spoke of before. It may, we may have another $1 million problem on the school side in '12.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Any other questions for Randy? I hope not.
She lost $1 million.
Carrie, any comments? Did you have anything else?
No.
Everything you bring up, we got a question.
I'm sorry about that.
That's okay.
Carrie?
Since we're talking about this, with a lot of our citizens either having been just laid off or had their salaries reduced or their contracts cut, but overall, basically the income reduced throughout the city in lots and lots of cases, we really need to look really careful at a rate increase or not, and we need to make sure that we go over that really, really hard before we go in that direction, or at least that's my suggestion to everybody.
Yeah, I think we all share that, without doubt.
But I thought it needed to be said.
Absolutely.
And I guess this letter talks about it. Did we ever determine on a single page what kind of price we're talking about, Randy, on the mailing list?
Price for what, sir? I'm sorry.
To mail this.
Trifold.
We think, based on our experience last fall with the revenue flyers, it should be somewhere in the neighborhood of $1,300 to $1,400. We may not use, it may not be as full color, so we may actually bring that down, but I wouldn't think that it would be any more than $1,400, and we'll maybe have to push it down. That's about a third of the cost of the original concept, so I think we're trying to live within our means.
Okay, that's a lot better than the first number I heard. Other thing was that article that Mr. Carmine's mentioned that was in the paper about Pecosa. I think that's, you know, the city manager and the staff that it just shows, and you can't hide that kind of success. So we really do appreciate what you all do and how you do it, and how hard you work, both city's side and school's side. We got low crime, we don't have many houses burning down, our people are getting really educated well, so it's just a good thing. Oh, that's all.
All right, thanks, Carrie. Frank?
Just echoing Carrie's comments about the article in the paper, it was great and it was well done, and compliments again to the staff, the school system, and everybody involved with the city. The only other thing I have is for the city manager, have we discovered whatever happened to the skateboard ramp?
I have.
Or maybe I don't want to ask that question.
I would be pleased to give you the definitive answer on that in writing, if you'd let me. Allow me till Thursday, I'll put it in the weekly report.
Okay. I defer until Thursday.
All right.
That's why I came and asked you about the stage, by the way. So five years from now, we would not be wondering what happened to the stage.
If we could put that to bed, that would be really good.
Randy and I attended the municipal mayor's chairs today and listened to, I think, all of the budget woes regarding the counties and the cities that we meet with, and they have some desperate times as well. So we're not in this boat, you know, by ourselves. Every locality has the same issue, and they're dealing with it in different ways, but they certainly have the same issue. We will be hosting the Hampton Roads mayor's chairs on Friday at the yacht club, and there has to be a member of the yacht club there, so Frank has agreed to be there, and he doesn't know it yet, but I'm going to certainly introduce him as a member of council, so he doesn't need to go too far away. He didn't know that yet, but that's what we're going to do. I'm really proud that we were asked to host it and that we could do that. It's a great bunch of people, and while we are on board with regional activity, we don't lose sight that we're concerned about the city of Pecosa first and foremost. So that's some of the things that we'll be talking about, by the way, on Friday. Just to let the community know, and those in the audience, that most of you were in attendance, that we did have a work session with the planning commissioner, we discussed economic development, something that we need to reengage in, in the city. Just as one item that we are working on and hopefully can bring to the city has to do with Centerra, provide some sort of a complex here so we have some medical facilities available in city of Pecosa. So we're, council's committed to economic development, but we want the type of economic development that best suits the city, and hopefully we will represent the city well in pursuing that. But we do plan on re-engaging with economic development and doing it very quickly. Bud, I want to welcome you and thank you for your desire to serve on the city council. You've come on this council at least the worst budget season that I've seen in many years. I personally look forward to working with you and interested in the, you know, in the ability that you bring here, the knowledge that you bring here, I think it's going to serve this council well. So I'm glad to have you on board.
Thank you very much, and I'm looking forward to working with you and the council. So far, it's been fun. I realize now I've got a lot more to learn than I thought I did in the beginning, but I'll get there.
Okay. With that said, you have any comments?
No, I don't.
Okay. Tracy?
I just want to reiterate what all of you said. This, you know, with the work session this afternoon and Bud's willingness to serve and the people that we interviewed for the seat, who would have all been good representatives of the city, I just wanted to say, I'm struck again and again about how wonderful the people who were born here, who have chose to come here, and who stay here. We just have a great community, and the newspaper article really, it was exciting to see. So I wasn't born here, but I did get here as fast as I could.
Thank you.
No, I don't have anything else, Mr. Mayor. I think it was all well-stated by the other members of council. Okay, all righty. We do have a closed session, and that closed session is pursuant to section 2.2-311A3 of the Code of Virginia 1950, as amended to discuss disposition of publicly held property the subject of the right of way.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we go into closed session in accordance with section 2.2-3711A, as amended.
Okay.
All right.
Motion made second that we go to closed session. Ms. Wiggins, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hesel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.